Good morning and welcome to the July, oh, July. August 27th Commission meeting will be led with the pledge by John Pecus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner. Just a reminder to silence your cellphones if you haven't. And the meeting documents for this morning's meeting are next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need a listening device, Mr. Wilson has those right here in the front. Excuse me. We'll begin with routine business.
Item 1 is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 2 is to approve the county commission minutes of August 20th, 2013.
Do we have a motion?
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 3 are bills to be paid in the amount of $544,826.52.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second with comment?
Mr. Chairman, today's bills include $80,000 for asphalt and we also have 140 individual bills on mental illness ranging from about $75 to $600 each.
Thank you Jeff. Any other comments about the bills? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports filed today. The next item is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Is there a motion?
I'll move routine action.
Second.
Any comments for Kerry or questions? Kerry, I had one. If I can find it here, a second. On the temporary part-time intern, that's item number 2. Is there any change in classification with quote Obamacare issues and how we need to treat that person?
The issue with healthcare reform is really about how many hours a person works in the intern. What we've done is we've set up a look back period of 12 months and those provisions have been delayed a year too, incidentally.
Okay.
I don't see a concern as the bottom line. We use a 12-month look back period. By the time that averages out, it won't be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is consider a request to convert the vacant part-time caseworker one position to full-time and begin recruitment immediately. The position was approved to convert to full-time in 2014. Kerry Deaver.
The action is what it stays. I see that Carol Muller is here and she has some questions on this one.
Do we have any questions for Kerry or for Carol?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the position. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item C is to authorize the chairman to sign administrative services agreement with IMCA Retirement Corporation in Minnehaw County. Kerry Deaver.
There have been some changes over the past couple of years with Roth retirement planning. And our current provider, which is ICMA, is now offering a Roth 457 plan. You've probably heard a lot about Roth IRAs as well. They're slightly different. As part of our discussions about whether or not to add either plan, we discussed with ICMA our administrative fees overall, so for our contract for everything. And we were able to negotiate a rate reduction if we would agree to a three-year term. The three-year term is consistent with what we have on other benefits contracts, plus we've been with ICMA now for over 20 years. So there's two things that I'm looking for your approval on today. One, a motion to authorize the chairman, chairman of the council to go ahead and sign the administrative services agreement for the three-year contract with ICMA. And second, your approval for me to go ahead and sign as plan administrator to begin offering the Roth 457 plan. Now, I fully expect I'll be back before you within the next couple of months as well about offering the Roth IRA, but right now we want to make sure we have payroll processes set up in place for that first.
Very good. Any questions for Kerry? Any comments? If not, we're looking for...
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the services agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Do we also have approval for me to sign as plan administrator for the Roth 457?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve you as administrator and thankful that you're doing it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you Kerry.
Right, thank you.
There are no application for abatement, there are no notices and requests, and there are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy. This is on DPNO 41935 in the amount of $1,524.03 and DPNO 33090 in the amount of $184. The auditor's office have received a request to compromise the lien from the applicant. The applicant is in the process of selling his 1971 mobile home. He has an offer of $1,500 to take the mobile home. The seller's sale is being forced due to the eviction from the mobile home park for back rent of approximately $800. The applicant is hoping to use the proceeds from the sale of the mobile home to set him up in an apartment. The applicant took it upon himself to come down and actually check regarding the sale of the mobile home. When he was down here, he actually discovered that there were in fact these liens. The first, in the amount of $1,524.03, was in the name of, I believe, his spouse, and that was in relationship to poor relief services. The applicant has made payments on that account, but there haven't been any payments since 2008. The second lien is in the name of another individual, the amount of $184. The lien was for Public Defender Services. There is a payment history on this lien, but none since 2008 when that $184 amount was originally recorded. The applicant's income tax turn shows an annual income of $5,717. He is unemployed currently due to a disability. His assets are primarily $554 consisting of household goods and liabilities of over $63,000 consisting of a large hospital bill, which is $60,000.300 for an outstanding ambulance bill. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien on this particular transaction only, the sale of the mobile home with no payment. He does need the $1,500 to go ahead and to secure an apartment due to the eviction from the mobile home. So with that, I will make a motion to go ahead and release the lien on him personally for this transactional.
Second.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Does he have any questions for Commissioner Pecus?
I do believe the applicant is here. I don't know if he wishes to address the commission. He doesn't have to come to the podium. He can address the commission where he's sitting and if that's his choice, but I don't know if he wants to say anything or not.
Would the applicant like to make any comments? Again, you can stay where you're at and you can address us from there if you'd like to make comments. If you don't wish to make comments, you're not required to do that and you do not need to identify yourself, so. Any comments? Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to release the lien. If you want to have any questions again for Commissioner Pecus?
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I would have to say 99.9% of the time, as Commissioner Barth would indicate, these mobile homes actually move and we have little if any notice that they're going to be moved. This individual took it on himself to come down here and actually find out about these liens. I would have to say that most of them fly under the radar. He took a proactive response. He's coming forward. He's made this request to us and I think we should be more open-armed when we have individuals such as us that take it upon themselves to say, "I know I owe this money, but I really need the help right now."
I just received a note, which I'm thankful for. Thank you for reminding me. The compromise and the release of the lien is only pertaining to the mobile home. Still leaves the lien in place against the individuals named with no payment.
Right, and that's what my motion was, I thought.
Yep.
I just want to reiterate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. You know, if we didn't approve this lien, we would probably end up assisting with poor relief, so why not give them their own money and let them deal with their situation going forward? And hopefully they can make it for a while without more county assistance, because if we deny this, they're going to be right back in trying to get apartment rent.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, I would also like to make the comment. This is the first time I can remember seeing someone who came in on their own telling us about their issues and also making small payments when they had limited income, and I appreciate their honesty and frankly, I appreciate the fact that they came to us rather than us going to them. So this is an unusual circumstance and I think there ought to be some, let's say, less stress in their lives at this point. If not, no other comments. We have a motion. And there is a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes to release that lien. You're welcome.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment about anything that is not on the agenda, we would like to hear from you currently. Again, you do need to identify yourself and you do need to give us an address, please.
My name is OJ Siemens. I live in Rosebud, South Dakota.
Pardon, I didn't hear the...
Rosebud, South Dakota.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear.
Okay, I'm here basically to address the commission's ownership, representation, and membership in the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Recently, a case that came to court in federal court, Brooks versus Gant, in which the plaintiffs from the Oglel Sioux Tribe wanted the state of South Dakota and the counties to put early voting stations within the pine yard reservation. During the course of that case, the state and the counties agreed to put early voting in there until 2018. Once that was done, the case was dismissed and I contacted the county auditors. They weren't interested in pursuing costs, but I recently learned that the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance is trying to pursue costs on the 25 plaintiffs, basically the poorest of the poor. And so I'm here to ask you as the owners and representatives and members of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance to disavow and ask that they not pursue those costs. You know, and basically, I've looked at cases before. It's not a... There's probably not going to be any costs that they're going to be able to take from these individuals because of the fact they don't have the money. But I think it's... Over the weekend, you know, they had a lot of celebrations on how far we've come on Voting Rights Act. These individuals did the right thing and now what they're trying to do is take and put them, have them travel all over Rapid City, take time to testify for a federal judge, open up their bank accounts and show exactly how much money they have, which they have none. And that's 25 individuals. So that's what I'm here to ask the county commissioners to do is either disavow it or to recommend that to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance that they shouldn't pursue those costs.
Thank you, Mr. Siemens. We appreciate your comments and your time and any... Commissioner Pecus?
Mr. Siemens, I actually read that article and I absolutely agree with you in every sense of the word. I don't think you're going to need that from us. And the reason I believe that's the case is because of the mixed result. You guys won your case. So if there's a question regarding whether or not there's a settlement or not, there's a lot of case law out there that actually says when there's a mixed result, typically, I'd be amazed if the judge ordered costs in these cases. And if the state does file motions or the SDPAA files for costs, I hope they also wrote an order denying those costs because I have no doubt that the federal judge will say that given this particular circumstance, there is no prevailing party. It's a mixed result. And it's up to the judge and the judge's discretion on whether or not they'll order costs. And given the financial situation, I believe, at least in my professional experience as an attorney, when I've had cases that have had mixed results like that, the court won't award costs, especially given the equity of the circumstances.
I understand that and I totally agree with you, but I guess what I'm asking is to actually take the plaintiffs from the reservation, have them travel all the way to Rapid City, and maybe they have to spend the night, maybe they don't, because there's going to be 25 individuals testifying, is putting them through that hardship of having to actually go there and testify. That's the point I make. There's... I agree. I don't think they're going to get any money out of it. But it's the fact that they're going to drag them all the way to Rapid City, set them in a federal courthouse, and have them testify, each and every one of them, open up their pocketbooks and open up their bank accounts to say that this is, "I don't have it. I can't pay it." And that's what I'm asking for you to consider, is to recommend to the South Dakota... Morally, legally, they have a right to do that. What I'm talking about is politically and morally. They should be advised that this isn't the proper way to proceed things in the state of South Dakota.
Again, thank you for your comments. Kirsten, do you have any additional responses you'd like to make as state's attorney?
I would just say that the Public Assurance Alliance, we basically contract with them for insurance coverage as a customer and I view this as a case where another customer, so to speak, another county, has been pursuing this through that insurance company. I'm not sure we have any direct involvement in this. I understand the request that's being made today and the comments being made today, but I would just leave it at that, I guess. Cheers, thank you.
Let me answer that, please. I actually talked to the county attorneys and the county officials in Shannon County. They didn't even know what was going on. It was the attorney that said that the reason to actually go for these costs was from the South Dakota Public Alliance Assurance, or Assurance Alliance. And so that is based... The actual going for the cost is based on that alliance, not from the counties.
Well, I won't speak... I don't speak for the county commission, but I don't think they should go for costs, personally.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I totally sympathize with the 25 individuals and I've got to say that, you know, there is a mentality of trying to discourage participation in the political process that has taken over in some parts of our country. And I regret very much that it happens as often as it does here in South Dakota. And I'm not sure that the insurance company, so to speak, is even doing this on their own behest. I think they may be... There are other forces that are suggesting this is what they ought to do. I'm not happy.
Any other comments? Mr. Siemens, again, thank you for your time. I don't see this as a political process. I see this as a legal process and I think we'll need to take it under legal advisement and we'll see what happens after that, so.
Any idea how long that might be?
That's like trying to guess when it's going to snow.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Well, I just got recently sent to the federal election, EAC anyway, and that didn't exist, so I kind of ask questions now to see if it's going to be 10 years from now or never.
Yeah. I can't give you a date. I wish I could, but we'll discuss it in more detail and then we'll come back and let you know.
All right.
Thank you for coming today. Any other public comments that need to be addressed today? We invite you to come forward and appreciate your time. Don't see anyone moving, so we'll go to item number 10.
Item 10 is consider a motion to declare 12 cash registers in the treasurer's office as surplus property and authorize disposal at a landfill. Pam Nelson.
I think the motion is pretty straightforward. We are familiar with the problem with the cash registers and we've now replaced them with the point-of-sale. That works perfectly. It's wonderful. It's a very needed improvement, so disposing of the cash registers is the issue. I was told they were worth nothing because the company that makes them is no longer in business. They cannot get parts for them. We had five registers that were gone, two of them that broke in one day, two broke another day, and this is all in the last month or so, so I'm not very optimistic about the remaining registers, but I'm willing to do with them whatever you want. I was told we should just take them to the landfill, but if you have other plans for them, I'm open.
Commissioner?
I guess my thought was that if you look at item 17, we're looking at doing away with surplus stuff anyway. I suspect that there are other people in Pam's former position where parts are hard to come by and cannibalizing these units could be worth something to somebody. I know that recently NASA, the National Space Administration, people had to buy some old computers because they didn't have anything that could read a five-and-a-half-inch floppy disk and they had some old floppy disks in their system. So I think we ought to just add this stuff to item 17 and dispose of it as surplus property. We can guarantee that it operates, but that they don't just take up space in the landfill.
I have a question when I can. Do we have to give any notice that we've put that on the list and all these other items on item 17 have been put out there quote publicly?
Not yet.
Not yet? So we're okay?
We're okay. I mean, if you want to take these 12 and add them to the list of surplus property that you're going to authorize for disposal at the auction that's coming up, you certainly can do that. And that's all.
Well, that's a good suggestion. Commissioner Heiburger?
After the surplus auction, I don't know what they're made on. Are they any value in scrap metal, other than dumping them in the landfill? Are they...
You know, quite frankly, I don't know if they'll sell at the surplus auction.
That's why I'm saying...
They end up there anyway.
Is there any value in scrap metal? That was my point.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Lloyd said he thought maybe the drawers would... The drawers that slide in might be worth some. But it's a minimal amount.
Commissioner Kelly?
This reminds me of a garage sale that your wife always wants to put on and you find out that they work three or four days getting ready and all day doing the thing and they make $150. I frankly think her request is probably more valid, just get rid of them. And we're going to spend more time and money messing around trying to salvage one cash register drawer than I think it's worth.
I just want them out of my office because they're taking up a lot of space.
In the spirit of Commissioner Colby, I'll just tell Dick Kelly that one man's trash is another man's trash.
I've been to his shop, I understand. The only thing that I have to say, Dick, is that Mary can watch this on TV and after you talk about her garage sale. We haven't had one in several years because of my arguments. Anyway, I think we're going to get on track. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second?
I have a question.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Is that a motion to put them in the landfill or to put them on the auction?
To approve the request from Pam.
Which is the landfill.
Dump them.
I'm not going to second that.
That's what I thought. Give me a second.
Spend more time on junk.
I'd make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to do what was requested, but then to authorize at the treasurer's discretion to go ahead and to see if there is actually a market for it. If not, then she can dispose of the landfill.
I don't know what that said, but I'll second it.
All right.
We have a motion and a second and I'm not so sure that I understood that one. I can't make a motion, but do you have questions for...
Who seconded that?
Dick did.
Dick, I'm a little unclear as to how that would go.
John, you're going to have to help us.
Well, all I'm trying to say is that if there is a market for these particular machines that you can parse them out and somebody's interested for the parts, that we can go ahead and do that and, you know, put them on eBay or whatever, you know, is the easiest way to do it. But if nobody's interested, she can dispose of it and dump them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My view is that we ought to put them on the list and if some smart citizen out there with connections with eBay, et cetera, wants to try doing that, that would be... Let them do it.
Substitute motion.
Motion is substitute. I'll take what he just said as the motion.
So you drew your...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. What is the final motion?
Motion to add it to the surplus property and see if one of our citizens is smart enough
to make a nickel out of it.
Do we add to the surplus?
I second that one.
Is there a second?
I'll third it.
You'll third it? Okay. We have a motion, a second, and a third to put this on the surplus property list. Any other questions, comments?
That's okay.
You're going to need a legal opinion on this? Oh, come on, what's up? We know. No way.
Now that we have one particular direction in the motion, I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
Whatever he says, we're not taking that into... We have a motion and a second to put it on the surplus list. Any other comments? Quickly, let's vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank God, we're done with that.
So Dick Kelly has to have a garage sale.
Yep. Don't bring it to my house.
Item number 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2013 Emergency Management State and Local Agreement Addendum between Minnehaw County and the South Dakota Department of Emergency Management. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioner Lynn DeYoung. As you know, on a yearly basis, we signed an agreement with the state of South Dakota for a work effort. That agreement typically is signed in October and then later on, we follow on with the funding. The funding is, excuse me, tied to the federal budget cycle, so that's why we've actually, if you look at it, worked all year up until now and then because of the federal budget and their cycles, we're finally getting the dollars for our work at the end of the year. If things were working right, we would sign the agreement and have the funds two months from now for next year, but that's not the way it's worked in the last several years. So basically, what you're doing today is, last October, you signed the agreement. Today, you're signing the addendum, which indicates the amount of funds that we'll receive in support of the emergency management program. That amount is $207,975.45. So I would ask the commission to authorize the chairperson, and I'm not sure, the chairperson and myself, to enter into the agreement for those funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? Commissioner Barth?
Lynn, have you already made a determination where you'll use those funds?
You know, the funds are for our salary and administrative expenses, so we'll have to go back and look at them. There certainly will be leftover funds, probably about $80,000 to $100,000. Typically, we send in projects. The problem is, is in the last year or so, the state has become more difficult in accepting leftover projects and we feel that's more of a bureaucratic decision than decisions that they've made in the past. So we'll send some things in, although not guaranteed that we'll get reimbursement for those items.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly? What is T E E X class?
Texas A&amp;M, College Station.
Oh, I think that's where you're at.
Tickets at school they all went to down at College Station.
Sure it is, but I'm not sure where you're at within my memo.
Well, I just wonder what the acronym is. Is it...
Tactical, whatever it is.
That's in the next one, I think.
Oh.
Yep, that's in the next one.
It's the next one?
Yep. Sorry.
No problem. I don't believe we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for 276,318,20. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. I would just ask Lynn to consider the Tri-Valley situation.
Yes. Yep. And that would be if and when that happens. That would probably be next year.
Sure.
Because of the way the funding cycle works.
Good suggestion. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the supplement. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm getting the wall sign.
No.
Are we on the supplement?
Agree with-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Emergency management.
I'm still on the junk thing, trying, trying to sell cash registers.
I thought I fell asleep for a minute.
Boy, talk about getting goofed up. I'm sorry.
Number 11.
Yeah, we're on 11. I just can't read my writing. Those in favor of the Emergency Management Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Emergency Management signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Now, item 12.
Consider a motion to supplement $276,318.20 from the Emergency Management Fund to the Emergency Management Budget representing reimbursements from various Homeland Security Grants. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners, Lynn DeYoung, again, Emergency Management. As you know, we manage certain Homeland Security Funds for the county and other entities within Minnehaha County with the request authorities to supplement back in to our budget those funds that have been expended. Within the supplement is a detailed list of the funds that are expended for what items and the requests we're asking for. So I'd be happy to answer any questions now on that item.
Okay, you have a question?
Yep, the TECS is down in Texas. It's a training center that the fire department sent their members to, and those are costs associated with that class that you see within the payment request form.
Were these volunteer or the city fire?
Nope, these are city fire guys.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
I have one, and I'm actually being kind of stellar. The airline tickets are extremely expensive. Were they like last-minute tickets? Or is it just that there were so many connections that they, or is it more than one person?
There's more than one person-
Okay.
-on here, and some of the, some of the reason they're expensive is because they also ship gear down.
Okay.
So we get, you know, the extra gear charges. But we do have to basically pre-approve these with the state before they go. So we're saying this is the item that we found. They go out and they do a second check, so they're aware of the cost before this happens.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's expensive when you have to ship lots of stuff.
Okay.
And College Station is a regional airport. It's not a destination, so it's expensive.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second. A motion and a second to now approve the 276, 318, 20 for the Emergency Management Fund with the various Homeland Security needs. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Item 13 is consider a request to authorize the use of personnel savings in the 2013 Information Technology Department Budget to contract with consultant for an electronic purchase order and voucher system. Monty Wantenbach.
Good morning, Commissioner. Monty Wantenbach with Minnehaha County IT Department. As you saw in my memo, I'm requesting to use personnel savings to hire a consultant to do some programming work. The programming work that I'm requesting is both to have someone do some hands-on work as well as kind of some knowledge transfer to employees. If you have any questions, let me know.
Are there any questions for Monty? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that Monty and I discussed this last week thoroughly and what the project would be and what they're working on and the opportunity for training, continuing education for one of our employees, and I think this is a very good project to go forward with.
Any other comments?
Well, just a comment that this makes sense. Instead of hiring an employee that six months from now we may not have a need for, just hires consultant, contracts it over, it's all done. I support it completely.
Any other comments? I'll just make one, and I'm certainly supportive of this, Monty. Generally speaking, we've had the policy of not being able to transfer funds from personnel to operations or vice versa. Kind of goes against, quote, our policy, but I think this does make sense, frankly, and you're using it for personnel, and the rate that we're paying is a very good deal. So I think this is a good program, so I appreciate your bringing that to us.
Yep, and that's, that's why I'm here, because it is something that I need your permission to do, and I do think it is the right fit at the right time to hire a new programmer to come in. Wouldn't work on this high of a level of project, and this is really what I want to put the focus on, and we'll just keep reevaluating this every, every several months to see where we're at, and there may be the need to, to hire that position, likely will be the need to hire that position at a later time, but right now, that's not really what, what we need.
Thank you, Monty. Any other comments? We have a motion.
I'd move to transfer the, up to $20,000 to the, from personnel to the consultant.
Is there a second?
Second. I don't know if we need a transfer.
Don't really need a transfer, you just need overall approval.
Just approval of the-
Same thing.
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Monty.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign Addendum 1 to the contract between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Corrections for housing at Community Corrections Center. Warden Gromer.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, Warden at the jail. I'm just requesting that you guys sign the addendum to the DOC contract. The addendum is based solely around the PREO guidelines that were recently concluded by the Department of Justice.
Any comments for, questions for Jeff?
Just a question, Jeff. If, if we decide to get out of the work release business, this is going to, we can get out of it. This isn't going to tie us into-
This is the Department of Corrections contract where we house the minimum security work release, some of the minimum security work release for the Department of Corrections. This contract-
This is different than, than talking about what's at the corrections center, then?
Yeah, to an extent. This contract, we've already signed the contract, which gives us a 30-day out clause anyways.
Okay, okay.
The addendum is solely concerning the Prison Rape Elimination Act from 2003. The Department of Justice just recently completed their standards, and that's what this is.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any comments, Kristen?
I'd just like to make a comment that in reviewing this contract, and I don't believe this was an issue when this first came up, the first time before we added the PRA language in here, but I noticed that the state wants our indemnification as a part of this work release contract, and I would just like to note that the recent trend in contracts that the county has had with the state lately is the state is refusing to identify, indemnify the county in other instances, and while this shouldn't be an issue in the approval of this contract because it's a minor amendment, I'd just like the commission to be aware that we are being asked to do that, but the state is generally now refusing to do the same for the county. That is all.
No comment.
Is this, is this the same issue as we had with the DOC?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
And the-
Yes.
I don't even know how to follow up with that one. Is there any questions or concerns with the contract? Do we have a motion?
We did.
And a second?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Jeff.
Item 15 is a briefing and update on Minnehaha County 4-H Program and Activities by 4-H Program Advisor, Charles Martineau.
Good morning. I just want to take a chance to thank everybody for continually to support 4-H and its program and its mission here. Just wanted to touch on a few updates here. One, the first update, I am the current full-time youth advisor as of last Friday. If you keep track of us, I'm the newest one. But I do promise to be here for about five to 10 years, so. Just wanted to touch base on a few things we've done for the county with the county's funds, is we took part in the 2000 Minnehaha County Achievement Days. We had 400 youth participate. This is a good number because for each youth that we have, they're three times more likely to be a productive community member as they get older. We did impact programs that reached 1,000 different youth in the community. We had 35 different daycares come through that received 4-H exposure. These outreach programs are important because every outreach program that we continually follow up with, these kids statistically are two times more likely to be more productive citizens growing up, and that brings me into our fall planning. We are going to continue to partner with 12 different programs in the county, from Hartford all the way over to Brandon, up to Dell Rapids, down to Sioux Falls, so we are going to spread out all over the county. And in this process, we want to continually doing that follow-up year after year and really to touch these kids and really make sure with our outreach, we can drive numbers into the 4-H program, but also drive the mission of 4-H. Very brief, just wanted to give you an update.
First of all, Charles, congratulations and thank you for coming. Any other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment, and that is also to welcome Chuck on board. You have to remember that Chuck wasn't hired very long ago as the part-time person, and as soon as he was hired, our full-time person resigned and moved, and so he got thrown from part-time into full-time just before the fair and pulled it all off, and then after the fair, was hired as the full-time person, and now we are looking for a part-time person, which hopefully will be filled soon. But Chuck really got thrown into the mix very quickly and I think did a very good job, so thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
On-the-job training, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign Addendum to Joint Security Protection Agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Military for Air Guard Security. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we have a current contract with the South Dakota Department of Veterans and Military Affairs for the security out at the air guard base, and that contract runs through September 30th, 2013. As in past practice, this contract is generally amended and reconciled to reflect actual costs as we get closer to the end of the contract period, and what you have before you is the third addendum to this particular contract that reduces the contract amount down to, excuse me, $845,700. And then in conversations with the Sheriff's Department and Keith Winia, and that this is not going to have an impact on our current budget for that, for that purpose out there. So we are, and we're asking you to authorize the chairman to sign this contract addendum as we get towards the end of this current year on the contract for the reconciliation.
Thank you, Ken. Any comments, Commissioner Barth?
Ken, how come they keep reducing the amount they pay us, and how come that makes no effect on us?
This is a total pass-through contract.
Yep.
It's just, it just, as the year goes on, there's just excess of money that the guard doesn't use and execute the money elsewhere. So as the year goes on, you kind of see that final number that we need to run as operation, and that excess money is just kind of getting spent otherwise and smartly and legally to other areas of the defense budget and all that, so. That's probably, it just happens every year, just kind of slowly, our, our number goes down, 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 but, you know, they still take care of us.
Would you identify yourself and give us an address? No, that's fine.
Keith Winia, Air Guard Division Supervisor.
Thanks, Keith.
Sorry about that, Charlie.
It's not a problem. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just happy it's not the other way around, where we're short of money at the beginning of the year and we're begging for money as the year goes through. They are at least funding us very well at the beginning of the year, and we can go through and just return money that we're not needing, and I'd rather see it that way than the opposite.
Yep, we're very thankful for that, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Heiburger on that. At the same time, so they keep an eye on what we're actually spending, and let's say Defense Secretary Hagel had come to town and there were extra costs, they would have taken that into account.
We basically, we have allotted slots in officers, and we give them a number we're going to be at the year, and we basically try to stay at that and hit that mark. Now, granted, we had to hire a few more people, and we've lost a few, so there's, there's lag in there as far as payroll and stuff like that. We're just, we don't have the officers that we, we thought we were going to have at that point, so that, that money is that we can execute, or the, they just take those monies and, and just use it in different areas of our budget. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. A motion and a second to approve the Joint Security Protection Agreement. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 17 is to consider actions regarding the disposition of surplus property for Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is the year that we typically prepare for the surplus auction that we conduct jointly with the city of Sioux Falls. The auction for the disposition of surplus property right now is scheduled for September 21st, and so we have a number of actions that we are going to ask you to take in regards to disposal of the property, and in preparation for this, we've taken a number of actions. You know, we've circulated the list of surplus property inconsistent with past practices. We've offered some of that property at first to our departments so that there can be some transfers of property within the departments. If there's something that another department can use, we, we go through that process. We also distribute the list after that's happened to our outside agencies and municipalities and townships to see if there is a need from those agencies to benefit from any property that we are getting ready to declare has surplus. So what I have before you is a couple of addendums. The very first one is Exhibit A is the Notice of Sale for the Property Auction, and Exhibit B is the list of surplus property that we've identified for, for disposal. So what we're going to ask you is that I need a motion to declare the property shown on attached Exhibit B, other than those highlighted in color, and now with the addition of those 12 cash registers, to declare those have surplus for disposition at the public auction and to authorize the county auditor to publish that Notice of Sale. That's action one.
And make a motion to declare that property surplus and authorize publication.
Second. A motion and a second?
To include those cash registers.
Include those cash registers. Those are the most expensive cash registers in town right now. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item B.
Item B, like I said, they're attached. Exhibit C is the list of property that we have identified and has been requested for donation to outside agencies, and we did that with the caveat that if more than one agency requested a particular piece of property and, you know, two people wanted it and nobody got it, and it was going to go to the, go to auction. And so what you have before you in Exhibit C is the list of property that's been requested for donation to outside agencies. It was interesting, this year, we did not get any requests for property, I don't believe, from municipalities or townships, and that for, or don't transfer to them. So if you are inclined to honor those requests that are shown on Exhibit C and that for donation to outside agencies, I need a unanimous vote, all five of you, to donate that property to those outside agencies as shown on Exhibit C.
Any questions for Ken? Do I have a motion for Item B? There is a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to declare the property a surplus and donating it to outside agencies. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. And do we need an item, a motion on the C also?
Now, on Item C, and that I know that this has been an issue with commissions in the past, and that, you know, you had wanted to at least have an opportunity to review those property requests that are being transferred in between departments. That's shown on Exhibit D, and that you will notice that there are no vehicles that are being transferred between departments at this time, and that, so we have a number of properties that are going from the Highway Emergency Management and JL to the JDC, some chainsaws, some file cabinets, some desks, bookcases, et cetera, from the Highway Department to facilities, a mower and a gator, and that, and Parks Department from the Highway Department to a Ford three-point tiller, and that, and then from the Emergency Management to the Sheriff's Office, some more chairs and some tables. So those are being transferred. You don't need a motion on those. Again, we bring it to you just for review purposes only.
Thank you. So can we go to the next item? If we don't need a motion?
Okay. Item 18, Consider Proposal from the United States District Court, District of South Dakota Probation and Pretrial Services Office for Contract for the FY 2014 Non-Medical Detoxification Services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, we currently have a contract with the U.S. Department of Probation and Pre-Trial Services to access our detox beds when there is a space available up there. And that currently, that contract rate that we have with them is based on the budget amount of 16 beds in a 2013 contract of, or, excuse me, budget of $716,78. So the current rate is 12273. They've requested, if we are interested in also leasing beds to them, what would the new rate be? If you look at the proposed 2014 provisional budget and use that same 16-bed indicator, the indicated daily rate would be 12859. If you want to go ahead and offer the use of those beds up for that purpose, and that we just need to authorize the chairman to sign that proposal and state this is the bed rate that we would charge. And I will tell you that the U.S. Trial and Probation Services uses that service very, very rarely. And then I think the last, in the last fiscal year, the last I checked, I think I went and counted four days and that four purposes. So they need, you know, it's a, they use it when they need it, and that if there's a bed available, but it doesn't happen very often.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth?
Doesn't this make us go through quite a bit of, so, trouble for four days of residence? I mean, if I go onto Hy-Vee and ask the meat department for an ounce of hamburger, I'm not really making them a very good deal.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. I should have said four individuals, not four days. I'm sorry. Four individuals.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would suggest that we go for the 12859, just because we need to cover our own costs, and that's all it does, is covers our own costs.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just think this is good government. And, I mean, it's cooperative government, and I think that's what we need to do. I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the suggested rate. Commissioner Heiburger?
I would suggest that it should be at 12859. So do I need to make a substitute motion?
Was your motion for 12859, or was it the?
For the 12859, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And was it second?
Yeah.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve the rate of 12859 for the probation and pre-trial services contract for the non-medical detox service. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item nineteen is consider a motion to approve submission of an application for disproportionate minority contact grant from the Council of Juvenile Services. Aaron Serska.
Good morning, commissioners. Aaron Serska, JDA Coordinator. And I'm just going to update you on the memo and kind of the outline I sent for this grant. This grant comes to us almost every year. It came to us last year. We used a portion of it for vouchers, and then a portion of it to do a readiness assessment consultation about our community. This year, we're going forward with using the recommendations from that report, implementing those, and we've realized to get those implemented, it's going to take some staff time. So what we decided to do is kind of do a contract for services to kind of be the DMC manager to make sure this work plan is implemented. This position will oversee trainings and education opportunities, engage community members, hopefully begin a DMC coalition, coalition monthly meeting, assist with the data, database that we need to get going in order to fulfill our obligations on data to the federal government, the states, and to be for our county, too. We're also going to use some of the funding to implement the training and for the materials and that kind of thing. The big change that happened between the outline that you guys got is the training cost isn't as much. What we're going to do is we're going to continue the voucher service that we set up already. There's contracts in place with community providers. It was also communicated that the Council of Juvenile Services would like to see some portions go to direct services, and that's what this voucher program provides, is community-based services at the early part of the justice system, which is within our diversion program. So what we're asking is to approve the grant, or approve the commission, commission chair to sign the grant. The application, sorry.
Any questions for Erin?
Make a motion to approve the chairman to sign the application.
Second.
A motion and a second to have me approve the grant. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Erin.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports, Commissioner Heiburger?
I just want to cut, it's kind of an announcement, too, for the fairgrounds. September 4th through 7th will be the National Fireworks Association's annual convention. It's the first time that Sioux Falls has hosted this event. It is going to be so big that at one point, the airport will be closing down the approach of the runway that the east parking lot runs in alignment with due to the fact that some of the displays will go so high, and that's on Saturday night that those, that they'll be closing down. So Wednesday through Friday, September 4th through 6th, they'll be showcasing fireworks by the members of the National Fireworks Association. Those nights are not open to the public, but Saturday, September 7th, will be open to the public. The display consists of over 2,000 fireworks and about 100, let's see, about 1,200 queues that are going to be run by the computers. The public display will take about three days to set up. The fairgrounds is going to have that open for the public. There'll be a $5 charge per carload or $2 per person for large vans. Public has to come in through the north parking lot and enter the fairgrounds through the north entrance. There's going to be 24-hour security during this whole event because of what we're doing out there. They'll begin admittance around 7:00 PM with announcements from the National Fireworks Association around 8:45, and the shooting will begin at dusk. There's no rain date for this event. They will just be doing, if it looks like rain on Saturday, they will be doing it sometime during those days of the convention. This is a big deal. They'll probably be able to see it as high as they're thinking, could see it through a large part of Sioux Falls. And I'm hoping the Argus Leader will cover it, and maybe some of our TV stations around town. I think it's going to be a very big deal, and it's kind of exciting. This is the first time they've come to Sioux Falls. They think our venue is perfect for what they're doing, so we will hope they will come back.
Wow. Could be a big deal.
Yeah, could be a very big deal.
I hope we get more publicity than just you, but you did a really good job.
I hope so, too.
Any questions of that? Any other liaison reports? If not, any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We got this letter from Bennett County talking about their issues with budget. And certainly, I guess I had talked to the governor's office about alcohol tax, and they mentioned that they were aware of a huge problem in Bennett County. And I've got to say, we've had some excellent coverage on it from Pete Herriman and the Argus Leader, and so I really feel quite up to speed on it. I will say also, though, that Ralph Kraft, the chairman who authored this letter, a year ago, when we had a suggestion for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners to bring forward legislation to change the split on the excise tax of alcohol, that would be to have the state give up some of their share with monies going to the counties, he torpedoed it because he said Bennett County would only get $30,000, whereas Minnehaha County would get $600,000. And so now he's asking us for our support on this. And, you know, here we have, just like in Sioux Falls, we have a government entity that gets taxes on alcohol, the city of Sioux Falls, that has a surplus. They can do whatever they want. They're swimming in alcohol revenue. And the state also has a surplus, but the state isn't going to help out Bennett County. Their idea is to have the federal government borrow the money and give it to Bennett County. Not necessarily a bad idea, but, you know, here we're begging for cash, but then when, when the federal government borrows money to give it, we're going to complain. You know, the fact is, South Dakota has the money to pay this, to take care of this problem. South Dakota, the distribution of this, of taxes is not right. And, you know, the state should help out Bennett County. And I think, I'm perfectly happy to help them out. I do feel a little bit like when it's something from Minnehaha County, they have no problem in shafting it, but when they want something, then suddenly it's an emergency, and that kind of ticks me off.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just to make a comment on this. The problem of Bennett County is similar all over the state with county governments. And it isn't going to go away, but I think the letter from the governor and other things in there indicate that for the foreseeable future, there's going to be no new taxes. To get a tax through the legislature takes a two-thirds majority to begin with, and that, that in itself is a very, very difficult deal. It takes an advocate, kind of like when they did the railroad deal and some of those. I believe that, and I don't know whether it's SDACC or whether it's groups such as ours, but I think that we need to put together some sort of a Manhattan project in South Dakota. And if you remember, that's where they developed the atom bomb. It was, it was done under, that was done under cloak of secrecy, but the fact remains, they put all the efforts towards solving a problem, and I think that's what we need to do. And I don't know where the, you know, where the leadership can come from this, but to look and see, because it's primarily a distribution problem, because there are governments sitting out there with surpluses. Not that that's bad, but, but the fact remains that we keep getting saddled with, with more and more, just like the exception in that lease or that contract, without any way of paying for it. And somehow, if this were Brown County or somebody like that, you know, and let's say, for instance, in Brown County with their highway issues, if they became so big, and their, if their criminal, if their public safety issues became so big, nobody's immune from that possibility. You either don't grant them, or you go into receivership or whatever. And I think the state's going to have a real problem when they try and figure out what to do with Bennett County. Because I, I don't know that there's any answer when you only got 850 taxpayers paying the base for every, the whole county. It's just a question that I wish commissioners would think about and say, you know, what is the answer? Do we just get a group of people together and say, how can we do this? It's going to have to take, it's going to have to be solved from the bottom up, not from the top down. And I would encourage that we continue to talk about it, because our problem that we had, I mean, we, that was not a fun budget year this year. And that was no fun in a year where we were in much better creep. So, much better doesn't mean much because there's not much growth. There's, you're doing much better with the same amount of money. I don't know. I would just add on to Jeff's comments, because I think it is primarily a distribution. And county governments, if they're going to be constitutionally mandated to do things, have got to have some source of revenues, and if it's, but taxes are taxes. People don't, people just look at their total tax package and say, I don't want any more. They don't care whether it goes to schools, or cities, or townships, or counties. And I think we're working on a tax system that was set up 100 years, 50 years ago. I don't know. And, and I think that has to be looked at. I think times are different today, and crime, crime back then was not a 50% of your budget problem, so, whatever it's worth.
Excellent comments. I appreciate everybody's input in that. Any other new business? Mark, I didn't ask you about this, but we have a new liaison, if you will, with the chamber. And Mark, you want to come in and introduce yourself and give us your background, which I think most of us already know, but we appreciate your being here this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Lee. I am the new Director of Public Affairs and Communications for the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. So you'll be seeing me around at your meetings and be here to support you on a variety of issues. One of my major responsibilities, of course, will be to spend the, at that all-inclusive resort, the Ramkota in Pierre, for the legislative. And I will enjoy that, too, but out there working with you and for you for the benefit of the citizens of Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls. Most recently, I spent time as the Executive Dean at the University Center here in Sioux Falls for the last 12 years, and helped develop that campus. And after 30 years in education and at a right time in my life, I decided it was time to do something different. And some people are still scratching their heads, but I think I made a great choice. And so I look forward to working with you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mark, for coming, and we appreciate the chamber's interest, and certainly we know that we're going to need your help through this process that we're in, so, thanks again. Any other new business?
Well, I guess I got a more of a personal or interesting item. Doug Hoffman is one of our circuit judges here in town, and he's been a longtime resident of Minnehaha County, and he served on a variety of volunteer boards for us. But anyway, he's out of town. His father passed away. But anyway, I want to talk to you a little bit about Charles Hoffman, his dad. His dad was a naval aviator during World War II and had Doug when he was in his 40s. And anyway, what was interesting is that he actually got the Navy Cross pinned on his chest from FDR Franklin Delano Roosevelt for action, where he actually torpedoed, I believe it was, a Japanese aircraft carrier. So anyway, what's interesting about that is that here this guy, Charles Hoffman, gets the Navy Cross pinned on his chest. You know who his roommate was on the ship? Guy by the name of George Herbert Bush. And he kept in contact with him all the way through his presidency, and they're still on a first-name basis, but interesting person. Meet two presidents in different capacity, but anyway, Doug's at the funeral today, but I just thought I'd mention that because I was thinking about him over the weekend, so.
Thank you, John. Interesting. Obviously, prayers are with the Hoffman family. Any other comments? Any other old business? I'll get back on the right page. Again, thank you for being here today, but I'd like to have a motion to go into exec session for personnel and contract issues.
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for personnel and contract issues in executive session. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll be back here in five minutes. Thank you.